On Washington has our prayer and pledge this evening. Mr. Washington?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm going to have the council and some very dear people, very, very dear to me, and some other folks on this council, really bow your heads with me for a moment of silence. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council, January the 12th, 2012. Certainly, I'm sure Mr. Washington was alluding to the fact that with the passing of Dennis Rehner, our city has lost an excellent and faithful servant, and a school board member, and someone who dearly loved the city and its children and families, and spent a lifetime's work making our city a better place. And we do acknowledge that passing, and certainly will miss Dennis and his wife. Nancy is here with us tonight. Nancy, we appreciate you being with us, and we certainly express our condolences and sorrow to you and to your extended family over the loss of Dennis, much too soon and much too young. Council members, if there is -- if you've had an opportunity to look at your consent agenda, you have that before you tonight, if there are any questions regarding items on the consent agenda, if you bring those to the floor now, or if not, are we ready for a motion on the consent agenda?
Mayor, there are no questions. I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second. All right, you have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. We also have the minutes of the meeting of November the 17th, December the 8th, and December the 15th. Thank you, Ms. Michota, for working on those, and those minutes are here. If you've had an opportunity to review those minutes, are there any additions or deletions to the minutes?
If not, Mayor, I move we approve the minutes as submitted.
All right, thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion and second on the minutes. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. We have several members of Leadership Rutherford with us tonight. We certainly want to welcome you. We're excited you're here, and about 11:30, 12 o'clock tonight, when we finish the meeting, we look forward to a small reception. I'm sure you're furnishing for the council. No, no, did I get that wrong? I'm sorry. But we are glad you're here, and we have other members of the public who are here. We certainly appreciate your attendance, and you're always welcome to attend our council meetings. At this time, we'll consider for passage on second reading an ordinance to rezone approximately 50.92 acres along southeast Broad Street from a planned commercial development, PCD district, to highway commercial, CH district, including approximately 12.97 acres south of Joby-Jackson Parkway, and approximately 37.95 acres north of Joby-Jackson Parkway. Is there a motion on second reading?
Move for passage on second reading.
Second. Thank you. A motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on December the 15th, 2011, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately .4 acres at 331 East Main Street from planned commercial development, PCD district, and historic H1 overlay to a single-family residential, RS10 district, and historic H1 overlay. Ms. Gail Henry is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the December 15th, 2011 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Ely, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and nice to see you and council members. The only public hearing we have this evening is to consider property that's located at 331 East Main Street, along the north side of East Main Street. The property is zoned PCD, and that's planned commercial district, and it was zoned PCD in 2003 to allow the owner to continue to reside in the house and also to use the house as a reception house. For about three years, she did use the property as a reception hall, but for the past five years, she hasn't used it in that manner. She's now looking to sell the property and to move, and the PCD zoning has presented some difficulties for lending institutions, for anybody interested in purchasing this house. Those who are looking at buying this house are looking at it for a place to live. They don't have any desire to operate a commercial business, this reception house, out of their home. So she's made an application to rezone the property from PCD, planned commercial district, to RS10, single-family residential district. The properties that are adjacent to this property along the eastern side are all zoned RS10. Just across the street, the properties are zoned RS15, and those both are single-family residential districts. This property is contiguous with CH zone property to the west. The property is in and will remain in our historic district, so that's something that will not change with the zoning. So simply stated, this is a downzoning because it's going from a use that would allow a reception house and residence to just allowing a residence and any other uses that would be permitted in the RS10 district. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this rezoning unanimously, and I believe you have the minutes in your agenda packets. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing, but before you make your decision, you should conduct a public hearing.
All right, any questions for Ms. Ely regarding this rezoning request before I open the public hearing? Any questions? If not, I'll open the public hearing at this time, and anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please step to the microphone. Is anyone here wishing to speak for or against? If not, then I will close the public hearing at this time, and we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to rezone approximately .4 acres at 331 East Main Street to a single-family residential, RS10 district, and historic H1 overlay. Zero motion.
Move for passage on first reading. Second.
All right, motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on December the 15th, 2011, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately .4 acres at 331 East Main Street to a single-family residential, RS10 district, and historic H1 overlay. Zero motion.
Move for passage on first reading. Second.
All right, motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Planning Commission to schedule public hearings to rezone three acres along Alexandria Drive and Florence Road from General Office, OG district, to highway commercial, CH district, and a PSO amendment for the Avenue Program Text Amendment. Mr. Adelot, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg and members of the council. During its regular meeting on January the 4th of 2012, after public hearings, the Murfreesboro Planning Commission considered and recommended the two items that you just read. These need to be scheduled for public hearings.
Ms. McGannon?
February 9.
All right, council members. Is there a motion that we move or have a public hearing on February the 9th?
So moved. Second.
All right, you have a motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Transportation Director regarding Thompson Lane improvements from Northwest Broad Street, US 41-70, to Memorial Boulevard, US 231, and Cherry Lane Extension from Sulfur Springs Road to Northwest Broad Street, US 41/70. Welcome, Mr. Richardson.
Good evening, Mayor Bragg, members of the council. As mentioned, I do have these two items before you this evening. The first deals with the Thompson Lane improvements. We have been working with the Department of Transportation over the last several years to try to arrange a funding scenario wherein we can move forward and implement this important project that's part of our major thoroughfare plan, which is the widening of Thompson Lane from Northwest Broad Street to Memorial Boulevard, from its current two-lane state to five-lane facilities that would ultimately have sidewalks and some other transportation amenities. In putting together a proposal before TDOC, which they have accepted and given us a contract, the agreement was that we would use some of our urban federal transportation formula funds and also provide local 20 percent match to those funds for the engineering phase and the right-of-way phase, which of course are the two front-end phases for this project, and that if we did that, the Department of Transportation would, after completion of these phases, go forward and actually provide the construction funding for this, which is certainly the majority of the cost of this type of project. As an additional part of this agreement, our contribution of our federal formula funds and our local match is capped at 8.5 million, and the Department of Transportation, regardless of the cost of any particular phase, would fund anything above and beyond the 8.5 million of what is currently projected to be approximately $35 million project. These projects are in various plans and have been things that we've been considering for a long time. These are in the regional transportation plan. They're also in the city's capital budget, the regional capital budget as well. This is a project that's about 3.9 miles in length. It is a project that would take several years since it's being done through the federal funding process and federal procedures process, and typically a project of this nature would not atypically take seven to 10 years to get to the construction of this. You do have that contract before you, and I would recommend that you approve the contract between the City of Murfreesboro and Department of Transportation that embodies what I've previously described. Be glad to answer any questions you may have about the contract of the project.
And this is regarding Thompson Lane?
Yes.
Are there any questions regarding the Thompson Lane project? Mr. Young, you usually ask when?
Well, I was going to ask, they'll be done in phases, I would assume.
We've already had that discussion. Since it's approximately a four-mile project, it would be very practical from a constructibility standpoint to do it in two phases, for one thing, and the other part of this is that the federal transportation bill lapsed two years ago, so the money's coming to the state through continuing resolutions, and they have to be real careful about the cash flow at this point in time. So based on those two things, our discussion has been that probably reasonably the first phase may be from Broad Street to about Haynes Drive. Anybody that drives that road constantly, as I know several of us do, once you get past Haynes Drive, it opens up some, and the traffic volumes are reflective to be much lower on the other end than they are on the Broad Street end, so that would possibly be where that gets broken.
How's the proposed signalization of Sulfur Springs Road in time to this?
This is, I think, the actual signalization of the Sulfur Springs and Thompson Lane would be something that we would pursue well before this because if this is a seven-to-ten year project, certainly we don't want to wait that long to do a relatively minor intersection project. We would move forward with that and then incorporate that into larger projects years out from now.
Is that in a two-year project or a year project, that intersection signalization improvement?
I think that that's something, and Mr. Lyons can correct me if he differs in opinion on this, that would be included in the next capital improvement budget, and he shakes his head affirmatively.
Okay, thank you.
If everything timed perfectly, when would you think that we would see equipment working on Thompson Lane?
At this point in the game, it's hard to tell because we're just in the contracting phase. We haven't even met set schedules and so forth. Having done quite a few of these, that's the reason I say that the seven-to-10 year timeframe would not be atypical for doing this. There's an absolute ton of procedural things. The environmental study itself will probably take a couple of years to do. It's not a quick process.
It's a start.
Absolutely.
You can't finish till you start.
What's the traffic count on Thompson Lane between Broad and Haynes now?
It's about 21,000.
One more since your son's drive.
Any other questions for Mr. Richardson? All right, what are your wishes regarding this recommendation?
I move we approve the recommendation, Mayor.
Second.
All right, thank you. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Moving on to the second item on the agenda is what I would call somewhat of a sister project to this. This is the Cherry Lane Extension Project, which is an extension of Cherry Lane from Siegel Park all the way over to Broad Street that would also include an interchange at State Route 840. In discussing this as a pair, basically, we're looking to do two things with Thompson Lane. Number one would be to widen that, to add more capacity, and at the same time, help long-term relief of this by providing a parallel route to Thompson Lane, which would be the Cherry Lane Extension, which is the subject of this item. Again, this is something we've been working with the Department of Transportation with. This differs from the other project in a couple of different ways. Number one, the Thompson Lane project would ultimately be managed by the Department of Transportation. We're only a funding partner. Conversely, this is a project to where the Department of Transportation is not, at this point in time, financially involved in this project, but we are having a contract to the Department of Transportation for the simple fact that they are the administrator or the contracting agency for federal funds. Unlike our transit funds, all our federal highway funds come through the Department of Transportation. In looking at what you have before you and the budget, this is currently estimated Phase Three, which would be the part from Sulfur Springs Road to Broad Street, including the interchange, at approximately $29.6 million. In this, we are looking to, again, use some of our federal formula funds and do the engineering and right-of-way phase out of those, the 80 percent, and the 20 percent match would be provided by the City of Murfreesboro, and that's currently programmed in our existing capital improvement program budget. If you notice down the construction, that unlike the Department of Transportation's Thompson Lane project, is now 100 percent locally funded. In doing this with federal funds, we are doing two things. Number one, for the engineering and right-of-way phase, the engineering is about 1.6, and the right-of-way is about 2.7. So we're looking at about five and a half million dollars of the engineering and right-of-way funds that's being federally funded. But maybe just as important, what you're seeing in the budget now for the construction, which is projected to be locally funded at about 24 million, would provide us the opportunity by starting this off through the federal process to attract later federal funds or state funds to this project. For instance, if we started this off in the process that does not meet the federal regulations, even if federal funds became available later, we would not be able to use them on this project. So by doing this, we're setting the stage to be able to use those and underwrite some of that 24 million dollars if they become available. So that's why that becomes important. The project itself is one that's in our major thoroughfare plan and has been for a while. It is a five-lane road which would go from about Sulfur Springs, an interchange at State Route 840, and then ultimately hit Broad Street. And this project is in our major thoroughfare plan, the regional plans, and the regional and local capital improvement project budget, and it has also had an interchange justification study that is being conducted and approved a couple of years ago by the Department of Transportation. And with that, we would recommend proceeding forward with this and entering into an agreement with the Department of Transportation for the funding as noted. Be happy to answer any questions you have about this project or the funding as well. Questions for Mr. Richardson?
Here again, Mr. Richardson, what kind of, is this a 10-year timetable?
Probably so because of the complexity of this. This is not only a pretty good road project, but building an interchange is something that takes a long time to do. You know, again, we have to go through the entirety of the environmental studies, which will probably take a couple of years. And we also have another, to kind of tie this together, Phase One of this has already been completed. That's by the Siegel Park. Phase Two probably has roughly 50 percent of the design done. It was a locally funded project, local processes, and we have kind of put that a little bit on the back burner due to the economic conditions. But knowing that that Phase Two is about 50 percent complete, and we're starting from scratch, it'll take several years even to get up to where Phase Two is, to where they can be conjoined later on if we so desire. So it is going to be a multi-year process.
Thank you.
Well, it certainly would be a pleasant addition to our network to have an entrance to the north side of the city without going through the middle, and I for one would certainly be willing to trade some bridge funds over Broad Street if there was a way to expedite a northern entrance to our city from 840. Is there any way we could do that?
I don't believe at this stage of the game that's something we could do, and I don't believe that that would expedite it. It's not really an issue of funding. It's an issue of process, and we're on step one tonight with this particular phase.
Will there be more acquisition for the interchange? Will there be property that will have to be acquired there?
Yes, sir.
Part of it's already owned by the city, is my understanding, but...
We did acquire the western portion of that, that one piece of property, several years back, and we will have, not only along the linear route that will be the Cherry Lane Extension, but the other side of 840, which would be the other side of the interchange, would have to be acquired as well.
Will that go towards any matching funds, or could that property be used for some portion of our expenditure in whatever it is in the future?
That may be a possibility, and I think that's something that we will discuss as this thing moves forward through the study process. We always try to do that whenever we can. There's been, I think, certainly a hesitancy of late to be able to use in-kind matches for these type projects.
All right, you have this recommendation from the Transportation Director. Are there any further questions? If not, is there a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Ms. Gales-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
And while I'm here, I do want to hit on just one quick and small thing. I handed this out to you this evening. I think you do have it on your desk, and I was wanting to kind of tie a little bit of this funding back together to show what we've, I think, committed to in the last couple of months. Back in December, the council approved a contract for the Bradable Pike Extension. You see as the top project, about 7.4 million. Tonight, you've approved the Thompson Lane, which is about 35 million, and the Cherry Lane Extension, which is about 29.6 million. Basically, we have put into the project pipeline approximately $72 million worth of what I consider very important infrastructure projects over the next 10 years. And I do say that is, the pipeline is the word I wanted to use because I think one of my responsibilities to get it from the planning stages up to the construction is to make sure that while we're moving forward with some other projects, and keep in mind, we've been working on those 10 years, the State Route 99 widening, which we hope to be closed Phase One. Phase Two, they're getting ready to move into the right-of-way phase of that project, Department of Transportation. The overpass of Broad Street, as was discussed earlier, and as those come on, we want to make sure that our pipeline has been backfilled with these projects that will be being worked on while these are under the construction phase. So I just wanted to make you aware that we are continuing to try to keep the pipeline full and getting some of these projects in behind them, even though they may take 10 years. If you don't start today, if every day that you don't start, you're a day late. So just wanted to add to that, to this overall discussion.
And certainly, Mr. Richardson does an outstanding job for the city, going to Nashville and finding some of the other funding sources for some of these road projects. And while he mentioned there's $72 million worth of road projects in the pipeline, this sheet also shows substantial funding from the federal government and the state government, and that's what Dana does for us. He always makes sure to see how can we leverage our local funds with our funding partners, and certainly serves all our citizens well.
Certainly. And thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Richardson. All right, at this time, we will consider recommendations of the Water and Sewer Board with bids for sanitary sewer rehabilitation and maintenance contract for 2012, and the purchase of property on South Malloy Lane, TM 102 parcel 1.10 for expanded regional stormwater, BMP. Is that best management practice?
Practice.
Very good. All right.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item is a contract for approximately $1.1 million for miscellaneous sanitary sewer rehabilitation and maintenance throughout our system. We monitor in manholes in strategic areas the amount of rainwater, if you will, that gets into the system, and we identify those that have the greatest amount of flow in them, and then come back with these projects through contractors and either completely replace a line or manhole and do pump repairs in some areas. And so this is just miscellaneous work throughout those areas. The total contract amount is $1,084,125.38 with InsentiForm Technologies Incorporated as the low bidder. We did have two bidders in this. We would recommend that the City Council award this contract to InsentiForm Technologies. They have performed work for us in the past and satisfactorily completed that work, and we would fund this from our working capital. We try to fund about $2.5 million worth of sewer rehabilitation each year, go through a 50-year cycle that will eventually get through the whole system in looking at these repairs and replacements. We're having aging infrastructure. Some areas are probably 75 years or better in age, and so this is at least a systematic way to go through the system and get the worst areas.
Where in particular are these?
There's several areas. Basin MF 10 would be Bell Street, basically down through the heart of it and goes on over to the university. The manhole rehabilitation, some of that miscellaneous is along a line out by Racket Club and Case and Court. Basin MF 10-3 is be along East Lidle, the sinking creek area, the North Baird, majority of it over off Fourth Avenue. There should be some illustrations in your documents. Basin 10-4 would be, it's along East Main and Elrod, those areas, and then along East Castle and some of those areas. And then there's some other manhole rehabilitation that would be out in the, basically in the North Rutherford area, Robinson, Old Last Cassis, some of that. So it's throughout the system in these different areas that we monitor the flows and identify through television inspection and physical inspection the defects, and then prepare these specifications for different methods of repair and replacement.
So most of it will require digging, or will not?
You know, right offhand, I don't know the percentage of what would be pipe bursting or which would be dig up. InsentiForm is a non-dig company. Basically, they do lining, so a lot of it may be some lining, but I'll have to get to you maybe the percentages of what is. Manholes will have to be dug up in some of those.
Thinking about our...
And sometimes they think they may be able to repair it or replace it without digging, but then we get into it and find out that it requires more. You can't really fix a line that may have a sag in it by lining it. You really have to dig that up and replace it.
All right, any questions for Mr. Kirshner regarding these bids for... All right, any questions for Mr. Kirchner regarding these bids for sanitary sewer rehabilitation and maintenance? If not, is there a motion that we accept this low bid?
So moved. Second.
All right, a motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
The next item is to purchase some property off Malloy Lane. Some time ago, the city purchased a tract that was continually being flooded in that area. And the city purchased that and then with that property planned a, a small water quality pond, if you will, that would treat the first flush, if you will, on a storm that would take the first water that would roll off the land and the debris that would come with it. Normally, that's when you get all the bottles and particulate and things like that. We plan that project and bid that project. And in the course of that, an adjacent property owner, Mr. Brooks, came and, and made us aware that he would be interested in selling his property or swapping the property in some areas to maybe expand or relocate the pond that we were planning. And in doing so, we have negotiated with him the purchase of 3.8 acres on Malloy Lane, which are adjacent to this property and would expand it for us, would allow us in the future to expand this, this pond, if you will, to take a larger 141-acre area that it would encompass and to help treat water quality-wise for our stormwater program. And the Water and Sewer Board recommends that we purchase the property at the assessed value of $108,500. We've reviewed this with our land acquisition group and with the Water and Sewer Board and it's a recommendation that we approve this purchase and use our stormwater funds for the purchase.
And that is the property in, is located number one there? Is that what we're talking about, right next to Rollins' yard?
Yes.
Is it the wooded lot?
Yes, it's the wooded lot. It's really a depression in there. It's low, and it holds water some, but that is the area in question. The, the area next to Malloy Lane, the smaller area, it looks like it's got a house on it, that's where the pond is going now.
And that's where that house is located?
That's where the house, yeah, it's located.
Okay.
Or was located. Has it been demolished yet? It's been demolished and removed.
Okay, the house is gone.
If you will, the right-hand corner, that's the Rutherford County Correctional Facility that's there.
All right, you have this recommendation of the Water and Sewer Board purchase this property. Are there any questions for Mr. Kirchner? If not, is there a motion?
I move we approve the recommendations. Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kirchner. You'll be happy to know that when I was first elected mayor, that one of the first calls I got was from that property owner to come out and see the water standing on his yard. And I drove out there and Rick Templeton, our street director, was out there with his waders on. And the water wasn't standing on the man's yard, the water was running across the man's yard. And it was up about a foot on Rick's feet as he climbed out of the, out of the car. And it, number one, made me very aware of what stormwater has to deal with, but never two, how well Mr. Templeton is able to take care of our residents when we do have problems. And though it has been now these 10 years to take this project on, I mean, it's going to make a difference. So I appreciate the work that your department has done, and certainly, I know Mr. Templeton will appreciate that of being taken care of in the future also. All right, this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Assistant City Manager with regards to grant contract for State Industrial Access Road to serve, can I say the word now?
I think you can.
Amazon.
Amazon.
All right.
In our continuing efforts to bring Amazon to our community, one of those pieces is road improvements leading into the plant. Through the State Industrial Access Program, you had before you tonight a contract with TDOT for $1,316,503 to extend the turn lane on Joby Jackson Parkway to the Amazon facility to build a new public street, a four-lane public street to serve both Amazon and NHK Seating down into what we would think of as the Amazon Plant Site and to signalize two intersections. This is a 100% state-funded contract. There are no city expenditures anticipated.
Will we oversee the project?
We are the contractor. We, we contract with the state for the funds and then the road contract will be let through us.
So we'll bid it?
Yes.
Other questions for Mr. Cromley regarding this recommendation? If there's no other questions, is there a motion?
Move to be approved. Second.
Thank you. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time, we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance amending Chapter Four of the Murfreesboro City Code relative to wholesale liquor. Ms. McGannon?
Mayor Bragg, members of council. As reflected in the cover letter, this matter is brought to you because due to the growth of the size of the city, now exceeding 100,000 in population, we are eligible under state law to have a type of business we've not previously been allowed to have. And that business has approached Ms. Wright to explore opening up here. In order to do that, we need to delete the provision we have in the city code that prohibits wholesalers of liquor and alcoholic beverages from being located in the city. So this ordinance simply deletes the prohibition against that kind of business being located in the city, which would allow that business to be located here.
All right, so this would bring us into compliance with state law?
Well, it would, the, the person could do it under state law now, they couldn't do it under local law. It gets rid of the obstacle that we have locally for their taking advantage of the state law.
All right. Any questions for Ms. McGannon regarding this ordinance amending the city code relative to wholesale liquor? If not, is there a motion that we pass on first reading this ordinance?
So moved. Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Ms. Wright, are there any beer permit applications?
Yes, Mayor, there are tonight. We have a ownership name change at a convenience store, 1722 South Rutherford Boulevard, Unit C. And they have met all of our requirements. We have a new restaurant coming to 2658 New Salem Highway, Suite A4. And they lack their final codes inspections, which they anticipate getting before we meet again, possibly even tomorrow. And then we also have a special event held by the chamber. You'll notice on your paperwork on that one, the event location is listed as 1020 North Holland Avenue. I understand that that, that business is moving to the Seton Building at Medical Center Parkway, so that event location will be at their new location in the Seton Building on January 24th, 2012. With the exception of the restaurant needing to finish codes, these have all met our requirements.
All right, they meet or will meet the requirements. Is there a motion we accept these beer permit applications?
I move they be approved. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. You have before you a list of the statements to be considered for payment tonight. Are there any questions regarding the statements that have been provided to you? Or is there a motion that we pay the bills?
Mayor, I move we pay the bills. Second.
Thank you. A motion and a second. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. I do not have any board and commission appointments to make tonight, but I refer you to a letter provided by the city's attorney regarding the school board vacancy created by the death of Dennis Reneir. Dennis' term would run through the end of April 2014, and the city council has the right and the responsibility to fill that vacant position generally at its next available meeting, but you can decide, I think, Ms. McGannon, to wait for a while if you prefer, but you just need to determine a way to fill or how you want to fill it or whether you want to fill it. Would that be a fair?
Yes, state law says that you have to. It doesn't spell out what the penalties are if you don't.
Okay. So we do have this vacancy, and I would like for the council at this time to consider how they would like to fill this vacancy.
Mayor, I know the last time that this came up, a few months ago, we went through an application process that was fair to a lot of folks and citizens. I think that this, and that's what we probably normally do. This situation, though, I think we're faced with a different set of circumstances, a very unique set of circumstances. If you think back from Patterson Park to Sportscom to the soccer fields, I think all you could say is that kids in this city had no greater friend or champion than Dennis Reneir. And when he left his service with the city, he went on to serve the kids again on the school board. And his wife, Nancy, I believe, wants to fulfill his term. And with her background and education, I think in the application that she has submitted to us says it best, I would like to continue my husband's legacy. And I cannot think of a better person to fill that role. And I think if Dennis were here with us right now, if we asked, that would be his recommendation too. And I cannot think of anything a greater tribute than to honor what I think would be his request that we do. Those are my thoughts.
Toby, I agree with you. I kind of grew up with Dennis myself, and he and I go back to my childhood days and his service to our community. And my 24 years of service on this council has been, has been amazing that he's, I couldn't say it any better than what you did. I think Nancy, with her, with her experience and her, and her commitment to, in her own way, her service to children of our city, I think speaks highly. And I think she would do a great job in that position. And I, I agree, I think it would be a great fulfillment of Dennis' legacy to have Nancy fulfill that. And having said that, I would make a motion that we place her in that position.
And I would second that motion.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Is there discussion regarding how to fill this seat? I know certainly, as you've mentioned, we did it by application the last time, and this is a little different situation. But is there other discussion before we vote on this motion regarding how you might like to fill this seat?
Well, Dennis sat next to me, Nancy, so I hope you can stand it. And Dennis, Dennis is a good friend. The Patterson Project, couldn't have done it without him. He and Lanny and, and Dennis was very dedicated to the school board and, and to me and my family and Phyllis, who was on the park for a little while. And Nancy, I just hope you can stand it, sitting next to me.
You know, Mayor, we could, and Toby mentioned earlier, we could have, we could go through the process again, and I think there's nothing wrong with that. I thought it was a fair way to do it. And we had a lot of good people who applied in the last process to, to fulfill that vacancy that was there on the school board. The circumstances were different, they were a little bit, a little bit different what they are now. So, you know, I, I think we could, we could gotten, we could go through that, but I think, I don't think we could got a better candidate or someone that's even more qualified to do it, when I think back over those, of those people who applied for that position. And I think we all feel, or most of us feel pretty comfortable in, in going forward with this. And I, I think at the end of the day, we would, we would probably come up with this decision. So, I mean, I, I don't want to go through, I don't want to go through the motions or a dog and pony show to get to the same result. It's just my thoughts, just my personal thoughts. I think we have, I think Nancy would do a great job, and there's no sense in going through that process for those people who may apply, in my opinion. They applied last time, were great people, and they were very qualified.
Any other comments? If there are no other comments, we have this motion and a second to ask Nancy Reneir to fulfill the unexpired term of Dennis Reneir. I believe, Ms. Wright, you have the form that she needs to fill out before.
I do.
What's the name of that form?
The Disclosure of Interest.
Disclosure of Interest Form, all right. And that's been filled out, so that requirement has been taken care of. All right, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. And welcome to the school board, Ms. Reneir. Thank you. Would you like to assume the microphone and begin your career on the school board? Your speaking role? Congratulations to you. We're very proud of you. Thank you for offering to do this. Is there other business from the staff or the city council? Mr. Cromley, I see, moving toward the podium.
Only two items, Mayor. First item is there's a contract that was in your packet but late for the regular agenda to hire Leanne Cox, who we used on the NHK Seating Project as our administrator for the grant from the state for the grading project at Amazon through the Fast Track Industrial Infrastructure Program, roughly $5.3 million coming to the city to monitor and perform the grading site work on the Amazon property. Ms. Cox served very well in the NHK project. Her fee is $10,000. It is fully covered by the state grant, so we'd recommend your approval of Ms. Cox as the administrator for that state grant.
All right, are there any questions to Mr. Cromley regarding the hiring of an administrator for this state grant? If not, is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Motion and second. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
The second one, the second contract council is a, an annual performance bond the city is required to post for the post-closure costs of what most people call the old city dump just off of College Street. We do this on an annual basis. The amount of bond that the city is required to post has been reducing over the years, and this year's amount is again reduced. The bond shrinks from $1,851,000 to $1,544,075. We'd recommend your approval of this subject to the city attorney's final review of the paperwork.
All right, any questions to Mr. Cromley regarding this, I guess it's an amendment in the in lieu of performance bond, post-closure care activities, Old Murfreesboro San, City Landfield, West College Street? Any questions for Mr. Cromley? If not, is there a motion?
So moved, Mayor.
Second. Thank you. A motion and a second. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Cantrell. We look forward to working together with Nancy and all the school board members, as we always do, and cooperate with each other and learn from each other. Thank you very much. Anything else? If not, you're adjourned.